Now we'd like to bring out a couple of our all-time favorites. Please, the girls, please.
The drawing is a 255.
See, didn't I tell you guys we make these characters come to life? We need some help from all the kids. We need all the kids right down here on the grass, real quick.
Okay.
Hey, come onto the River Pass!
All right, uh, do our rehearsals.
All right, good morning, Americans.
All right, it's rehearsal. These guys are gonna mirror the past.
Ready?
Ready on the count of three.
All right.
One, two, three.
Come into 1994 River Pass!
Three.
Come into 1994!
Now, welcome to 1994 River Pass.
The 1994 Fulton River Pass.
What's my head in, not really.
Bud and Beavis. How Bud had to go.
As a public service to the citizens of the city of Fulton, I've been volunteering my time to videotape meetings since January of 92. My only motive is a firm belief that an informed electric will make an informed decision at election time that will ultimately benefit us all. If you share my belief and would like to donate blank videotapes to help me with my expenses, please call me at 598-5120. Thank you, my name is Terry Reynolds. Videotapes of all City of Fulton Common Council meetings are available to rent free of charge to the public at Video World.
The clerk, Colerole.
Mayor.
First Ward.
Second Ward.
Here.
Third Ward.
Fourth Ward.
Here.
Fifth Ward.
Here.
Sixth Ward.
Here.
All present except for Mayor Valet, First Ward Alderman, and Third Ward Alderman.
Item number one.
Whereas Donald Gardner began his career with the city of Fulton in 1960 as a member of the police department transferring to the fire department in 1961. Whereas he was transferred back to the police department in 1964 and served as a patrolman until 1969 when he was again transferred to the fire department. Whereas Don was promoted to the rank of fire captain in 1983 and promoted to the rank of assistant fire chief in 1989 in which capacity he served until his retirement from the city on July 9th, 1993. Whereas Don served a total of 33 years as a City of Fulton employee in both the police and fire departments, commanding his crews with excellence and earning the respect of his fellow police officers and firefighters. Whereas his dedication as a patrolman and firefighter for the city of Fulton is well appreciated by his fellow workers, citizens of the city of Fulton, as well as the mayor and members of the common council. Now therefore be it resolved that this resolution of appreciation for Donald Gardner be spread upon the official minutes of this common council meeting of August 17th, 1993. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be transmitted to Donald H. Gardner.
I'll move it.
Second.
I'll, uh, Colerole.
Fifth Ward.
Yes.
Sixth Ward.
Yes.
Second Ward.
Yes.
Fourth Ward.
Yes.
Motion's carried, your honor.
Item number two.
Whereas a meeting the council held on July 20th, city clerk was directed to advertise, receive, seal bids. This meeting of August 17th for furnishing the city of Fulton with piping materials to be used for various city projects in accordance with specifications prepared by city engineer Neil Beebe. Whereas no bids have been received to date, it resolves city clerk is hereby authorized directed to re-advertise, receive, seal bids in his office on or before September 7th up to 4:00 PM for furnishing the city of Fulton with piping materials to be used for various city projects in accordance with specifications prepared by city engineer Neil Beebe.
Motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
Whoop. Neil here. Neil, what's the delivery time on that? Once we receive bids, award them?
Check to Mr. Sperry, as soon as the contract is fully executed, probably a week, 10 days, most of the things should be in stock, big rush construction, which is going on right now.
Is September 7th our next meeting?
Yes.
There are projects that are gonna be going on in the city where that pipe's gonna be needed. Could we receive bids sooner than that and award it at that meeting? So we're gonna think it's all right?
We could pull it up. Matter of few days, there's no regular council session scheduled. We could do an idle, it looks like we did the old ones.
That's what I'm thinking.
Do one before the 7th, make a recommendation, should be a clean bid. You just get a check.
Right.
Bits at the end of the week before that month or year. That's agreeable to Congress.
Because as we discussed before, there's no reason to, to open the bids during a council meeting and, you know, wait for the next meeting, as long as it's done in public anyway. Um, and that might step up the process by a couple of weeks or a week or whatever. Do you have a, a date you'd be comfortable with Neil, receiving the bids and reviewing them and getting?
Put up very much. But in our old, it won't be in the paper till next Tuesday. Well, anytime for people to get the bid back, once you get the bids back, we can shorten it up very much, but you can make it whatever, whoever's convenient for the council, probably very end of that week before the 7th meeting.
The 3rd or 2nd?
The finality, whenever later days in there, something like.
That's gonna be on a, a Monday, something like the 3rd or 2nd?
Make it, maybe like Friday before or something.
Might do that then.
One more. What date would that be?
I'll make it a Friday? Thursday? No, that'd have to be the following week, because it wouldn't be advertised till 24.
Righty before Monday's holiday. Righty before the 7th, 3rd. Second, 3rd, whichever.
Second, okay. A couple of days.
I'll do it on the 2nd then. Um, then, um, the resolution agreed that the city clerk and the city engineer would be authorized to receive bids on September 2nd, 1993 up to 4:00 PM and to open the bids at 4:15 PM on September 2nd, 1993. And the city engineer will then make his recommendation to the council for September 7th. Is that what you want to do?
Is that okay with everybody? Okay, I'll move that.
I already got a motion and second.
Oh, that's right. Colerole then.
Fifth Ward.
Yes.
Sixth Ward.
Yes.
Second Ward.
Yes.
Fourth Ward.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Item number three.
Whereas Phil Howard, Fulton, New York, has applied for vendor's license to sell farm produce at Bullhead Point. It resolve, the common council approves the application for the vendor's license for Phil Howard, direct city clerk to issue the license in accordance with city code.
So motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Colerole.
Fifth Ward.
Yes.
Sixth Ward.
Yes.
Second Ward.
Yes.
Fourth Ward.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Item number four.
Whereas Ruth Sheldon, Fulton, New York, has applied for vendor's license to sell farm produce at Bullhead Point. It resolve, council approves the application for the vendor's license, direct city clerk to issue the license in accordance with the Fulton City Code.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second. Discussion? Colerole.
Fifth Ward.
Yes.
Sixth Ward.
Yes.
Second Ward.
Yes.
Fourth Ward.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Number five.
Whereas Richard Ledoux applies for vendor's license to sell farm produce at Bullhead Point. It resolve, council approves the application by Richard Ledoux and direct city clerk to issue the license in accordance with Fulton City Code.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Colerole.
Fifth Ward.
Yes.
Sixth Ward.
Yes.
Second Ward.
Yes.
Fourth Ward.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Item number six.
Resolve, the mayor is hereby authorized to sign a quitclaim deed for the estate of Nunzio Fitzgerald for the property located at the intersection of North 7th Street, Whittaker Road, as per attached.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
I'd like some clarification from Spencer if I could on the location of the property.
Uh, seven?
Hmm?
Seven.
Item number seven.
Resolve, city chamberlain is hereby authorized directed to transfer $7,773 from the A1910 allocated insurance account to the A5110 maintenance streets accounts to cover the current tree and stump removal add-on less dated July 16th, which was approved at the August 3rd, 1993 common council meeting.
Motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it. Discussion? Colerole.
Fifth Ward.
Yes.
Sixth Ward.
Yeah.
Second Ward.
Yes.
Fourth Ward.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Number eight.
Resolve, scheduled bills payable dated July 6th, 1993 through August 12th, 1993 have been audited by the auditing committee and hereby approved.
I'll move it. Second.
Second.
Discussion? Colerole.
Fifth Ward.
Yes.
Sixth Ward.
Yes.
Second Ward.
Yes.
Fourth Ward.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Number nine.
Resolve, city clerks report of receipts and disbursements for the month of July in the amount of $4,380.49, hereby received, approved, and placed on file.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second. Discussion? Colerole.
Fifth Ward.
Yes.
Sixth Ward.
Yes.
Second Ward.
Yes.
Fourth Ward.
Yes.
Motion's carried, your honor.
Item number 10.
Resolve, the following bills are hereby approved for payment. Jones Chemical, $2,036.64 for ferrochloride. Business Records Corporation, $2,544 for service agreement. Both are budgeted but over $1,000 charge limit, requires the council's approval.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Colerole.
Fifth Ward.
Yes.
Sixth Ward.
Yes.
Second Ward.
Yes.
Fourth Ward.
Yes.
Motion's carried, your honor.
Number 11.
Resolve, city chamberlain, city clerk are hereby authorized to attend the New York State Conference of Mayors Fall Training School from September 27th through October 1st.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Colerole.
Fifth Ward.
Yes.
Sixth Ward.
Yes.
Second Ward.
Yes.
Fourth Ward.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Number 12's gonna be held till after executive session, uh, under attorney-client privilege and discuss it, then come back out in public and act on it. Uh, number 13.
Resolve, city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for the following places in City of Fulton for the 1993 primary election.
I'll move it.
Second.
Discussion? Colerole.
Fifth Ward.
Yes.
Sixth Ward.
Yes.
Second Ward.
Yes.
Fourth Ward.
Yes.
Motion's carried, your honor.
You ready with the other one yet, Spencer? It's okay? There are second on that motion. Item number six. Oh, okay. Last, move it.
Yeah, we had it, but we didn't have a second.
They're in the right of way of the street.
Yeah, and they just, the bank won't give them money without it being cleared up. It's, it's kind of typical. It's just that one corner of the home. I think so. I'm not sure, I think so.
I'll second the motion to six.
Any further discussion? Colerole.
Fifth Ward.
Yes.
Sixth Ward.
Yes.
Second Ward.
Yes.
Fourth Ward.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Uh, item number one, any discussion? Spencer? What do you have in here, any 201 chestnut?
Yeah, I guess we're going to see, um, offers that city chamberlain begin advertising for sale for tax purposes, 201 chestnuts.
What about A. Bill?
That was a property.
Well, that was the property that we had talked about taking down.
Yeah, I, I believe that's delinquent as well, it's up to the council.
And that's delinquent, and we were also going to move to take it down on an emergency takedown because of the condition of the property being all open and garbage, trash, appliances all over the place and no one's living there.
I guess you want to see if it brings any offers first and then, should it not bring any offers?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, proceed to tear it down.
Well, you're gonna first check out. You're gonna take it on a rev, or on a tax deed. Right. So you're, you're gonna, oh, okay, yeah, sure, I see what you're saying.
So I'm saying not to tear it down yet, because that would be an expense to us, where we could convey it to somebody with no expense. Take it first.
If you pass by it, it won't take much to take it down, there isn't too much left.
Yeah.
I, I, I do think you ought to have a hearing.
Well, you have to.
Right.
If you're not taking it on a tax, or a tax delinquency, and you're thinking about taking it for teardown purposes, I think you should have a hearing where you invite, what's his name? The, the owner and any party of interest, you may have a mortgagee or a lien holder that has a, has a proprietary interest in the property.
That's, if we don't take it first.
Well, I, I, I think you should let me do what's called stub search to find out who's got an interest in the property. The, the right way to do it is to get a stub search, find out who has a vested interest in the property, notify them that you intend to, um, destroy the property for dangerous buildings.
Can I ask you a question, Mr.? If the, if the city was to acquire that property on a tax deed because of the, of the delinquent taxes, and if we were then to tear that down, would that be reflected, should anybody buy the property as, as part of the tax deed, as a cost?
Okay, the back taxes?
I mean, would that be added to the back tax bill if we owned it?
Oh, well, you could make that a stipulation, whether you're gonna get any bidders. I mean, you, you might not get bidders because the taxes may be more than the value of the property. I, I'm not sure what the taxes are.
At the present time, people that do have an interest in it are not coming forward with any more money for taxes because there's nothing that's salvageable there.
Right. Let's say you do get it on either a tax deed or you, you destroy, let's say you get it on a tax deed, um, they're gonna have an interest in that property if you try to sell it.
No, I'm saying go through proper procedure, but we're not talking about a piece of property that anyone here would want to own or live next to, is what I'm saying.
If you tear it down and clean it up, they might.
Oh, yeah, but you have to do something with it, but if we leave it in the condition it's in now, it's not going anywhere.
Really, I mean practically.
Yeah. I agree with you.
Okay.
What, what's the responsibility to any lien holder if we take it on taxes? We don't have any, do we? Isn't it still up to the current owner to settle matters with any lien holder, even though the property is no longer theirs?
Well, I, I'd have to look at a stub search to see what type of interest they had to determine if you got the property.
The stub search for 201's been done.
Right.
Can we, can we advertise tonight? Sure. Motion's carried.
He advertises in the local papers, and I will send a certified return receipt request letter to Gold Dollar.
Next week?
In Birmingham. No, I'll do it this week, putting them on notice, and I might send two of them. So that we, we can. Because I, I understand that property wants the bank forked out the, uh, back taxes out of the blue, according to the former city attorney.
So can we advertise tonight for the public hearing or not?
No, you're gonna.
Not, not a public hearing.
You don't have to have a public.
A hearing with the property owner.
You're just gonna, you're gonna have a public notice put in the paper, and the chamberlain will do that.
Well, you need a public hearing if we're gonna tear down a house and, but not take the property. Right. No?
Excuse me, uh, should we tear down these buildings, do they meet the, uh, square footage requirements to rebuild on? See, we're getting in a situation, we keep tearing down these buildings that are under another building code, okay? Is there 8,000 square feet there to build a house on, or is it just gonna become another vacant lot?
What, I don't know, what's, what does that have to do with taking down the property if it's not safe for, for anybody or?
How do you know it's not safe?
Do you know where this property is?
No, I, I'm, I'm.
Okay. You need to leave here, go look at it and tell me if you want to live next to that. Or if you think it's safe.
Well, I mean, if it's structurally sound.
No, you have to, you need to go look at it, Phil. It's a disaster.
The thing is, what I'm getting at is if we go out and tear down these buildings, okay, we have an 8,000 square footage code, don't we?
But the, the purpose of doing this is not, is not to rebuild on the property.
What are you gonna do?
The purpose is to make the neighborhood look better.
Yeah, fine, but we're still gonna.
I don't care if anyone builds there.
We're gonna take something off the tax roll.
Go look at it, that isn't the purpose of this. You tell me if you're, if you're the neighbor, would you want to live next to this?
I, I agree with you 100%, but if the building is structurally sound, our best thing to do is trying to sell it to somebody as a rehab rather than knocking it down and taking it off the tax.
We can't, I can't argue that point with you because you don't know the building, you don't know what I'm talking about. Go look at it and you'll come back, you'll come back with a different opinion, you will.
Well, well, what I'm saying is we can't arbitrarily.
No, you're right.
We have to be very careful, because every time we take one down, if, if there's not 10,000 square feet in that lot, we can't rebuild on it, gentlemen.
I'm coming down to open and tear it down.
Okay. All I'm saying is, is we gotta look at it very carefully, and we gotta be very sure that they're not resell, not sold with you.
No, I agree with you.
Okay, that's all I, I, that's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
But go, go look at it, you can't miss it. It's, it's right across from Van Buren Park. It has the washers, the dryers, the stoves, the, uh, garbage, the mound of, uh.
It's not the burnout, is it?
No, no, it's a different one. It's open in the back.
Also, what, last time we auctioned off city property, uh, that we acquired through back taxes, we tore down the, the buildings because they were unsafe. Now, the reason we took it was because we weren't collecting taxes on it. We ended up selling, I think, most of them, if not all of them, as vacant lots. You're right, they were too small to build on, but the neighbors bought them to.
Well, I went to Yuga Street, you still?
To, to, excuse me, to use as a side yard or whatever, and granted, you might not be getting as much in taxes for a vacant lot as you would for an improved lot, but in those cases, in, in these cases, we're not getting anything. So I think it's better to at least have a vacant lot and have somebody paying some taxes on it than having a lot with an unsafe structure and not getting anything out of it.
I understand, but I'm not saying anything about unsafe structures, but I would like to see us try and refurbish these houses if they're salvageable, if they're, if they're gonna, granted, tear them down.
Well, it's not gonna be up to us to, to renovate them.
No, I understand it.
Like in Jimmy's Ward, you know, that one is just a matter of, of back taxes and it's, can be fixed up.
It just looks bad from the outside, the inside, the walls are a little shabby, doesn't mean the structure's not sound, okay?
I, I believe the one in, in 201 chestnut may be sound.
Yeah, but I, I've seen a couple of them, they say, well, let's tear this down, I'd be mad people across the.
No, I, I haven't ever paid to turn that down at all, I bet. I've been dedicated, trying to get it up for a tax sale and hoping that somebody can rehab it, because that's right in a predominantly R1 neighborhood, you know? And it's surrounded by all good properties, it's the only eyesore in the neighborhood, and hopefully somebody can take it that'll clean it up.
That's what I'd like to see.
Make it a nice single family.
I know I have one in my ward that from the outside doesn't look too bad. I mean, it being vacant for a year or so, you know, it's not up to snuff the way a house would be if somebody lives in it, but I've been told by some of the neighbors that it's, it looks terrible inside, because it's been let go, and, you know, nobody living in it, and when they did, they had dogs running around and like that, but I don't, that doesn't necessarily make it structurally unsound. I think that's what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying.
And that's where you need an engineer, an architect, contractor, somebody that can tell if it's worth saving or not, and this is one I think we're gonna be taking on taxes, and I'd just soon sell it if possible as is and let somebody go in and fix it up.
I've looked at a lot of old houses in town that are dilapidated with broken windows, and, you know, the back porches make them look unsafe, but, you know, they look very structurally sound. I mean, they didn't build crap like they do today, you know? They're good, solid houses, and if the floor joists and foundation are good and the walls aren't rotted away and the roof ratchets aren't gone, it's salvageable. And somebody with a couple of parts and a lot of sweat can go in there and make some nice houses out of this place.
But there are some, like Ross pointed out, that are beyond salvageable. So we're gonna do, just advertise or take the Chestnut Street one? Or we're gonna take both of them?
Just have the Chamberlain proceed to advertise and sell 201 Chestnut Street for the unpaid taxes.
Do you want to advertise for a delinquency sale for just the one property?
It's up to the county council. I'd make two separate resolutions.
Okay, the one resolution would read that the city chairman would advertise for a tax delinquency sale for the property located at 28 Van Buren Street would be the first resolution.
I'll move it.
Your second? Call it off.
Fifth Ward?
Yes.
Sixth Ward?
Yes.
Second Ward?
Yes.
Fourth Ward?
Yes.
The second resolution would read, city chairman would advertise for a tax delinquency sale for the property located at 201 Chestnut Street.
I'll move it.
Your second?
Second.
Call it off.
Fifth Ward?
Yes.
Sixth Ward?
Yes.
Second Ward?
Yes.
Fourth Ward?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Item number two under discussion, Safety and Health Resources Conference.
The mayor asks that this be put on Thursday. There's a conference September 8th and 9th in Albany, and it's a Safety and Health Resource. Some of the things that'll be done there is all facets of government and industry will gather to discuss emerging relevant safety and health issues. Division of Safety and Health staff will be on to provide specific information on all program areas. Crane certification, asbestos abatement requirements, window cleaning, et cetera. In addition, professionals from OSHA and related fields will be on hand to address any concerns. Various topics such as hazardous communications, asbestos, respiratory protection will be presented during this lecture. It'll be September 8th and 9th. It's $125 per person to go. The mayor asks that this be put on the agenda.
Is he looking to go or to send somebody?
I didn't get to talk with him on it. I don't know if he, if it was him.
We're looking to send one representative from the city, whoever may.
He didn't, I didn't really get to discuss it with the mayor, Dave. I was asked to put it on the agenda, and that's all I know about is what I read.
Are there budget monies available? Is there budget monies available to send eight persons?
I, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell. I would say because of the lack of people going down to the mayor's conference, they all.
I would suggest that if there is budget monies available for the purpose, that we should then send the representative from the city.
Okay, do you want me to just write it up that a city representative be sent? If it falls within the budget, yeah.
$125?
Right.
Yeah. What budget is that?
It's in Albany.
Yeah, call it inclusive, stay overnight, or is it your choice of one of two days?
It's $125 per person, will include lunch on both days, sit-down dinner, all conference materials.
About overnight accommodations?
It just said that for anyone needing accommodation, the special conference rate of $82 for a single and $94 for a double has been set by the Desmond Hotel in Albany. And reservations have to be in by 17th in order for anyone to go. Or, excuse me, yeah. I think they, I think they would take a late one, but I just got this today's one.
Got today? They said reservations or do you buy?
No, I just got this from the mayor.
Oh.
I slipped one on the agenda.
Aren't you, are you gonna put the dollar amount in there?
Mm-hmm.
By the way, would the room be two then? Would it be charged to the legislative account?
Mm-hmm.
How much would we bring? The room fee, any card?
Pardon me? It's $125 includes everything. Wow. Oh, I wonder if this is, if this is.
This is cap and registration.
Right, right.
This is plus 82 for the room.
So it'll be 207? It'll be $207. Resolved that a city representative be authorized to be sent to the New York State Department of Labor Safety and Health Resources Conference in Albany, New York, September 8th through 9th, at a cost of $270, $207 said charge to be addressed, charged to the legislative travel account.
I'll move it. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Call it off.
Fifth Ward?
Yes.
Sixth Ward?
Yes.
Second Ward?
Yes.
Fourth Ward?
Yes.
Am I gonna be here? I don't know.
Second Ward?
I'd like to be here.
No, no. Fifth Ward? Anything? You brought this one meeting?
Uh, no.
Sixth Ward?
No.
Anything from the public?
Whatever happened to the noise ordinance? Anything being done on it?
The one that we had proposed a couple of years ago had a lot of problems involved in it with industries like that. We have some kind of noise ordinance in the code or the charter presently that has been in there, and we're starting to enforce that.
Anything about cars running around with no markers?
Um.
You'll have to contact the police, there is a vehicle traffic violation.
Oh, well, no markers at all.
That's a motor vehicle traffic infraction.
Phil?
Just want to make the council aware, I'm a little upset with the last council meeting. When you adjourned executive session, then you came out and beckoned the council and passed a resolution to submit a $125,000 purchase offer on the Gildan property. I think that was, that should have been done out in the public, and I think.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Blair?
Go ahead.
Did you stay around until we came back from?
I certainly did.
And you don't appreciate the fact that it was done in public, even though you were the only one here?
Well, I mean, nobody told anybody that they were gonna vote on it.
It was on the agenda.
Exactly.
No, it was, it was on the agenda for executive meeting, okay? It wasn't.
Executive session, right.
That's right. Now, the thing is, is, you know, everybody's telling me this is not gonna cost the taxpayers and the citizens of Fulton assent. I called Mr. Tietro today, I asked him what our bonding rate was today. He told me to call the Chamberlain's office. I called the Chamberlain's office, they told me to call Mr. Tietro. It wasn't too long ago this city rebounded for $2 million, so I imagine our bonding rate somewhere is around 4 percent, maybe four and a half. At 3 percent, $125,000 is gonna cost the citizens of the city $144,486. We're gonna lose $10,260 in taxes we generate off that building. Upkeep and maintenance over 10-year periods, about 10 percent of the cost of the building. That's conservative estimate. We have to renovate the property to make it handicap accessible. Yes, you do.
It's already handicap accessible, we were told.
It is?
That's why community development wanted to move into that building, because where they're currently at is not handicap accessible.
Okay, I don't think.
We also start out with the wrong figure of $125,000.
That was the purchase offer on the last meeting, was $125,000.
I thought the purchase offer was $125,000.
The purchase offer was $120,000. Just to quickly address your questioning, the executive session, it's perfectly permissible to discuss purchases of land in the executive session. Not required by law to have a public hearing. I asked in the common, the common council, at, in a, to achieve open government, had a public hearing, not necessarily required. So they really went above and beyond the requirements of open and good government, and I just want to address that.
Now, was it $120,000 or $125,000?
$120,000.
$120,000. I'm sorry, I must have been really upset because I heard $120,000.
That was, that, I think that number was discussed, but that wasn't beyond.
Well, I thought the resolution was passed to offer $125,000.
It, the resolution may say that, and it's an error. The contract I looked at was for $120,000. I looked at it just today.
All right. Well, here regardless, okay, we're talking about Fulton Community Development leasing the building for 10 years at $1,000 a month. Is that what you agreed upon?
Wrong again. $1,300 a month, at least $1,300 a month, because that's what they're currently paying negotiators.
All right, because it's, the way I figured out over 10 years, we're gonna have to get about $1,560 a month out of that place to get our money paid. All right?
Mm-hmm.
Now, I'm sure you're going to assess the merchants in the area for the parking lot maintenance.
That's our intention.
Okay. Are they aware of that?
I'm sure they are. We discussed it several times.
Now, what about insurance? Who's gonna cover the insurance on the building?
The building itself, I assume, would come under the city's liability insurance. The contents would come under community developments.
Oh, I'm sure. All right, well.
And that's subject, perhaps, to some negotiation on the part of the city, with the CDA.
All right, the thing I'm looking up, looking at is the city's gonna have to come up with about $67,000 if community development only pays $1,000 a month. If they're gonna pay what they're, the object here was to move out of that building and pay less rent than what they were paying over at Watertower Hill.
No.
Yes, that's what they told us.
That's what, who told you?
That's what they told us right here in the.
Who's they?
Cheryl Rutless was in here.
We?
They wanted to get a lower rate, they wanted to lower their rents.
She never mentioned that to us, since one of you guys, but we have. From the best of my recollection, she never discussed having a lower rent.
Yes, you did. She said it would give them more money to operate around the city.
I don't recall her saying that.
Yes. But what I'm trying to get at is, how does this council plan on getting the monies back so we don't start taking this out of our budget to subsidize this building?
Now, Mr. Blair, I might be able to answer some of your questions, okay? Number one, your facts and figures are absolutely erroneous. They don't apply to anything that we've discussed with the people involved. And if you would take a look at the figures that are correct, we're in approximation of $240 a month deficit on that building, all right? With the amount of sales tax generated by having additional parking for the merchants on that west side, we would defray that cost to near zero. So in reality, whatever monies is spent by this city would be turned a hundredfold, as well as giving an asset to the city, in 10 years from now, at absolutely zero cost to the taxpayer. And that's why it was purchased, in the best interest of the people.
Well, I hope the gentleman really believes this is gonna happen. But I mean, what you, the decisions you make here are gonna, our kids are gonna pay for it. And our taxes aren't gonna go down in this city. Never will. And I think, I think you should have announced to the people that were here, if you were gonna vote on it. I really think it would have been the polite thing to do.
Most of the time is, when we go into executive session, for example, we have four items, we may have maybe half of them that we act on, and we do that every meeting. If anybody wants.
You may have to act on all of them.
Well, we don't necessarily have a resolution on every single one, but.
True, but I wouldn't say that, you know, we're gonna act on half of them, we may not act on any of them, or we could.
But oftentimes, we act on something that has come up, and anybody is free to wait for us.
Can I ask you another question, Mr. Blair?
Go ahead.
You've attended several of the council meetings here in the recent past.
No, I've attended everyone this year.
Okay, you've attended everyone this year, that's good. Now, you know from past experience with this council, when we have a public hearing, normally, the night we have the public hearing, okay? We make and move a motion that night, correct?
Sometimes.
Sometimes. And other times, we refer it.
For the next.
Until we can analyze it into the next meeting. And I think if you go back and correct your notes, that's exactly what happened to this building, because we didn't have enough information to make a good judgment call. At the night we had the public hearing on the information that was presented to us, we did get the input from the public.
Did we have that building appraised or not?
Pardon? Yes, yes. For higher than what we purchased it for.
Much more. So we did do our homework, and we did do what was, again, I will repeat, in the best interest of the people of Fulton.
And just to note on a couple of things that you commented on, I recall it being on a couple of agendas where it was on for discussion only, and I think there was more than ample opportunity for the people to come and discuss it, including a public hearing, like I said, which really isn't required.
Yeah, we did have a public, public hearing, and I appreciate it.
And so, you know, just because at some point it went into executive session, we came out and they voted on it, and it was above board, 100 percent. And Mr. Beebe inspected the property, they've had it appraised, they've done all the prudent things, and then made the political decision to purchase the property. And it's not a done deal. It's merely an offer.
Well, I got the information, $125,000. The information I got was $1,000, was the rent offered by Fulton Community Development.
Well, certainly, their, their goal for attempt is gonna get lowest rent. Well, that certainly isn't necessarily the city's interest. We're gonna negotiate the best rent we can get.
We have to get enough out of that property to cover what we're looking for.
And I'm sure that that'll be discussed, and you certainly have ample opportunity to inquire and seek a fair.
Well, the trouble is with this council and the city altogether is, when you go try to get information, you can't get information.
Anytime you want any information. Yeah, anytime you want any information, you call me up and I'd be happy to provide it. We're absolutely open government.
Can you tell me what our bonding rate is right now?
I'd have to ask the Chamberlain.
I already did, I asked.
By law, we're required to be open, and, and, come on, you know that you're getting any information you want, anybody off the street can get any information. That's the, one thing that we're stressing in this administration is absolutely open government, it's critical, or just, it's governed by the people, for the people.
That's the way it's supposed to be. Thank you.
That's the way it is. Anything else?
The night that Carol Rut- Rutley was telling about moving over there, she said that she was gonna pay the same rate that she's paying now, thirteen hundred dollars, and I was here at the meeting. It's the same that she's paying now is gonna go over there.
Right.
Said it right there that night.
And that, that was the, the whole point of buying this building, opening up the parking lot, and moving them over there, and so that didn't cost the city taxpayers any more in tax, in city property taxes. And then at the end of the ten years, it's only gonna take us about eight months to recoup what we would've collected in property taxes, the ten thousand, if that number is even right. And after that, we're gonna be at the thirteen hundred dollar a month rate, about fourteen thousand dollars a year. And that's assuming we don't raise the rent over the ten-year period. So we're gonna be, you know, as Mr. Blair said, our children, who is he, is looking out for, are gonna be better off in ten years for what we did.
I'm talking that the west side of that, they have some parking.
Plus, they're gonna get better visibility if they wanna open up the back of their stores. Ross and I just went to a conference, and one of the things they were saying is, you know, visibility of the stores, so people know what, what you have, and they can park nearby.
You mean the same thing on First Street, if we open that back up, we give visibility back to the front of them?
Yes.
That's what they were saying.
Yes.
And if, and plus, we're not only the common council, we're also the agency board, so, correct me if I'm wrong, Spencer, but don't we set the rate for community development, the rent? I mean, who, you're saying we can negotiate the rent with whom? The city owns the building, and we're the agency board, we're just being negotiating against ourselves. So I don't see a big problem with losing that one. But I wouldn't put anything past us. Anything else in the public? Chief Staffy? Anything? Roger? Bucky? Neil? Anybody else ready? For motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll move it.
Anybody? You know what, too? Huh?
I'll move it.
I think, yeah. Second?
Second.
Discussion, call the hall.
Fifth Ward?
Yes.
Sixth Ward?
Yes.
Second Ward?
Yes.
Fourth Ward?
Yes.
We, we will be out in public.